When we get our regular session started this evening, Board Secretary, please let the record show that all Board members are present and that Board Member Burn is participating via Zoom. At this time, I have the honor of leaving us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so if all who are able can stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next agenda item is approval of the agenda. The recommended action is that the Board approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I would.
A motion from Board Member Christ. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Board Member McCoskey. Any discussion at this time? Seeing none, we'll vote. Okay.
Aye.
Board Member Mohammed Kani. Board Member Christ.
Who voted aye?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Board Member Burn. Board Member Burn votes aye. Motion carries seven nothing. Moving on to Agenda Item 3.01, Public Comments. The Board of Education welcomes comments about the issues being discussed. The Board uses this time in our meeting to listen to the public but will not comment or engage with the public during this meeting. The Board allows for up to 10 speakers per public comment period. The Board Chair will call on the individuals in the order in which they signed up. Substitutions are not permitted. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes and will be timed by the Board Secretary. Comments must be acceptable for a business and family-friendly environment. Inappropriate language, gestures, or personal attacks will not be tolerated. It's inappropriate to address the Board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meetings. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or the district office. If you have materials that you'd like to share, please place them in the tray on the podium, and they'll be distributed to the Board members following the meeting. We have one speaker this evening, Mr. Roy Holland.
Being the only speaker, does that mean I get to fudge a little? Fudging isn't allowed in the boardroom. Okay. My name's Roy Holland, and I've been a board watcher since 2017. Prior to that, I was in the Legislature for eight years, and there I learned that you need to hear both sides of every argument before you make important decisions. I'm here tonight in opposition to the choice of the remote industrial site for the new Pipkin and in support of the midtown neighborhood. We need to maintain its integrity. But I do agree that the building replacement is justified. It's an old building, and it has maintenance costs. And the location of a new building is important to maintain midtown and the multiple elementary schools and neighborhoods that it serves. It seems thus far so that the location of the new building has been discussed more as a, on the basis of an obvious, easy, available property than actually the preservation of midtown and its neighbors which it imperils. I've got a handout here. It's got a red dot there. You'll know that it's from Roy, and that represents the dominant property in the current neighborhood for Pipkin. This is, the red dot is Central Assembly Church. This controls also several of the other properties in the immediate area, and that I actually took the bold move going over and talking to them. They desire to be a friendly force in the future of Pipkin, but they have been puzzled why no one from SPS or this Board or the task force has contacted them regarding the location options. To make an important choice with the remote location will risk devastation to the midtown and leave its elementary schools with no nearby middle school. That does seem kind of nonsensical and may reduce midtown values, values businesses, and attraction to families. Also, the proposal of 550 students at the remote site is unrealistic. Recent numbers have been running 415 and likely to be less, and this represents an expensive overbuilding and waste of public funds. There's no residential area in the proposed site. Who will play on the playgrounds before and after school? Who will attend meetings after school and programs that keep kids in school?
Thank you, Roy. Your time has elapsed.
To...
Thank you, Roy.
To heed the judgment of the... I'll get it straight here. Heed the judgment of the Planning Committee.
Thank you. Moving on to Item 4.01, Contracts, Agreements, Change Orders, and Bids. These items are being brought forward for review this evening. We'll vote on these items at the September 26 regular meeting. Does Dr. Shaw come in? Okay. Does the Board have any questions on Item 4.01? Sure. I know that there have been some presented via email that have been answered. Are there any additional questions? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to Item 5.01, Board Policy Adoptions and Revisions. There are three policies on the agenda for review this evening. The policies will be brought forward for a vote at the September 26, 2023 regular meeting. We've had time to review these policies and ask questions. As a reminder, these policies are brought forward by MSBA with recommended adjustments based on legislation and change in statutes. Are there any questions on the proposed Board policy adoptions and revisions?
Just a comment about BBF. There was a comment from MSBA at the top about striking out language that we may want to maintain towards the bottom. While the language that was added was a part of the legislation, the part at the bottom is Board determined, and so they struck it out, but suggested that Boards consider keeping that, those items that were struck out. So right now, if we, without discussion, if we were to vote on it, right now it's currently struck out. I am saying that I would like for it to be put back in.
Okay. Are you making a motion that it be put back in?
Is, I don't know that we're voting today. I thought it was just informational.
You're right. Yeah.
Well, I would agree with Board Member Tate. I would like to see those stay in. They were created by us, and I think it's closer to what we are today.
This right here?
Yeah. That would be my thoughts, too.
One, I think it's important to clarify that this was not legislation, that this is simply to stay with the newest version. So it's, yeah, so it's not like the law. And I do think, you know, you look back to when was the last time this policy was put in place? It was originally adopted, look at that, 10 and a half years ago. And so I think it is wise to, you know, they were thinking something, and they have these specifics. My only hesitation is I am not in favor of adding all 10 because there's redundancy, and I don't think the policy will look professional and put together. I do, if the Board, if the members are amenable, I think we should perhaps go through one at a time, one line, and see which ones would add to the seven, right? Instead of, we had 10, now they're putting forward seven. So if we add it all together, you're looking at 17, but it's redundant, and it just looks messy. But I did note that, and I made a note of the ones that I think they skipped, that they did not include, and I would like to see those specific ones included, but I don't want to be redundant. So perhaps if we have time, or if the Board wishes, we can do that now, or perhaps we can come in with our suggestions by email or however.
Would Board Member Thomas Tate and Board Member Mohammed Kani want to work together for a motion for next time?
A motion?
Motion, we just make recommendations.
Recommendations?
So when we come back together for our next meeting, what I'm hearing is that Board members will just come with recommendations for changes before we make the vote. This is going to be on the agenda for a vote. Is that correct?
Yeah. Or in advance.
Yeah. They could get together and then just email us the changes, then it would be shared with the entire Board. We would modify it, and then it would be sent out with the Board, with the Board packing.
Can the two of you spearhead that?
Sure.
Sure. I would like to hear from everyone. Otherwise, it's just going to be our opinion.
Well, I don't think necessarily. That's not, that's not true.
I mean, I would like, if anybody has anything to add, I mean, I already know that Mr. McCoskey wants all 10, but I would like some direction.
So maybe we have discussion tonight, and then you two get together and propose changes that will be put forth to the Board. Board Member Burn?
Can't hear you.
Yep, you're on mute.
At the top of this policy, it says under Editor's Note, "Please let me know if you want to keep any of it, and I will take the strike out off and incorporate the two lists. Please don't attempt to do that yourself. It's complicated." So whoever's writing it, whoever the editor is, should we ask them to incorporate these two lists together and remove anything that's duplicating it versus having more members try to do it?
It's the same thing. We tell them which ones we want to leave, and then they would incorporate it. So you would say, leave one, leave four, leave six, leave seven, and then they go and clean it up. That's how it works. So we tell them which ones that we want them to leave.
I'm in favor of us, all of us, participating in through, via communications on what we would like to see stay and what we would like to see go, and make your comments from there, and see if we can come down to a consensus for when we come up on the 26th and vote upon that new policy.
I mean, we've done this like in a Google Docs when we take surveys and things. Could this be approached as that?
I don't, I don't think so.
The best thing, if everyone wants to have input, is for you to actually go through it tonight at this point, and then we walk away and share the revised changes with MSBA, and then we would have a revised document, just to be on the safe side, so that we're not conducting business outside.
I personally am not opposed to repetition and redundancy when it comes to some of these rules, but they could easily be integrated as noted by the editor. But if the rest of the Board desires for some to be taken away, I could, I could, you know.
Be persuaded?
Not persuaded, just, you know, fine.
Yeah.
Are there any ones that a Board member wants straight up removed, not because it's redundant, but just because you don't agree with the particular statement, or is the primary concern redundancy? Because if it's just redundancy, I'm hearing that we can go back to the drafter, being MSBA, and ask them to include it all, right?
You could just say, leave them all, remove the strike out.
And if they're going to integrate them, that would in itself reduce the redundancy because they're going to integrate them. So I imagine that if we don't have any that we want to absolutely take out because we don't agree with it, then I think they could figure out how to put them all back in to the top part of the document.
Am I missing something? To go back to MSBA, isn't this our policy?
It is.
Well, then, why do we have to go back to MSBA?
Because they've already done it.
I see.
I think what my hesitation isn't so much redundancy. What MSBA has done is they've created more of an umbrella. It's a little bit more broad, and then ours are very specific. You can almost tell, oh, well, we should add this, we should add this. So I feel that theirs is actually, you know, I think we should be careful in terms of keeping seven and keeping all 10. It's not just redundancy. It doesn't read well.
Absolutely.
Do you see what I mean?
Yeah, but I think to Board Member Burn's point, the note in here says that MSBA, the drafter, has already incorporated the two lists, so that if a Board wants to combine the two lists, they've already incorporated it. Don't attempt to do it yourself. It's complicated.
Oh, you think that they, see, I think this is probably a cookie cutter they've sent to everyone. You think they've incorporated our list into this?
No, but I think that they will.
Okay.
Yeah. And have their attorneys look it over and all of that.
I would like that to happen.
Is there any objection to that? And then it'll be brought forward to the Board?
And then we can edit that one if we don't like it.
Okay, seeing no objection. Thank you for pointing that out.
Let me ask a question. Well, then, is Board Member Mohammed Kani and Board Member Thomas Tate, they're not returning it back to, oh, got it.
Once MSBA makes the edits, it will be sent out to the entire Board.
And then we have the option to still edit before we vote.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on the proposed Board policy adoptions and revisions? Seeing none, we'll move to Item 6.01. Chief Information Technology Officer, Mr. Bruce Douglas, will join us at the podium to present to us the District Technology Plan Update. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the time to give you an update on where we're at with our technology plan development based on our conversation from last month. So I'm going to hit on three major areas here. First is just how are we aligning our work to the strategic plan, and what are the desired outcomes of this work? Next will be how are we going to approach our engagement strategy and seeking input to ensure we've got the right information for the development of this plan? And then finally, sharing what we anticipate the timeline for this work to be. So let's just always come back to our strategic plan alignment, sure that we are aligning all of our work back to our mission and vision. And so as we went through the strategic plan and looking at how do we best align this work, we're looking at the success-ready students governing priority. And then as we start looking at our different objectives, we key back in on Objective 1.2 of how do we ensure that we're implementing district-adapted curriculum aligned to Missouri learning standards? Finally, coming down to Objective 1.2 and Strategy C of developing a plan to implement digital citizenship curriculum and technology guidelines across content area. So this allows us to ensure that the work is aligned with the strategic plan, and we highlighted just a little bit of the work already underway with this Objective and Strategy C. So as you recall, last year, we brought together a Technology Integration Committee. They served and provide recommendations last spring, and from that committee, we adopted several different pieces. First, our middle school strategy adjustment, and then also adopting an educational technology plan with ISTE standards, and hiring two educational technology coordinators that began in July 23. Along with that, we wanted to highlight some of the work already underway this school year. So with the restructuring of the IT Division, we now have three new directors over three departments, and part of their onboarding is to develop three-year plans for each department. That ranges from refresh of equipment to planning out software implementations and refreshes of software, to how do we approach data literacy throughout the organization and ensure that we understand how to effectively use data. So each director has been provided guidance to have a plan, develop a draft for our budget cycle beginning in December, so we ensure that we understand where they're at, what each department is needing as we shape the overall divisional goals. Second, we have an Educational Technology Committee that we'll be establishing here in the coming months. The goal here is to continue that work we began last year. How do we effectively get input? How do we listen to stakeholders, especially our teachers, around what their needs are? And how do we align our budgetary decisions around that work? Because we want to make sure that we are providing the resources to our teachers and students they most need, and so we need that technology committee to constantly do the work that we started last year. Third, we've begun the work of the software inventory that's curated, so we know exactly what software we want teachers utilizing within our classroom, what software we've adopted as a district. Along with that, we are going to be implementing a review process. So as teachers are looking at new software to utilize in the classroom, we're utilizing those educational technology coordinators to help vet that, make sure it's aligned with our curriculum, and that we're using best practices as we begin to use technology. Fourth, we have been engaged with four of us around our internal audit around student privacy and data security. So we're currently scoping that work and ensuring that we're covering all bases, and so that work will be delivered this school year. And then finally, our just annual capital planning is underway in September as we focus on refresh cycles, ensuring that our equipment stays current, and that we're providing the resources we need in our schools. So with that work already underway, we started to really discuss what are the desired outcomes we have with this work. And we have kind of two sides of the house here. So first is the Information Technology Division. And what we came together on is that we want to establish clear goals and milestones for the division that are aligned to the strategic plan in providing the appropriate resources. So all that to say is ensuring that we have good refresh cycles, so equipment stays current, that we have the best technology available for our students and teachers, and that we're seeking that input to ensure it's the right technology they need. And then on the other side of the house, as we think about educational technology, we want to see the successful implementation of those ISTE curriculum standards that aligns technology with best practices so that we're effectively impacting instruction. And so we're kind of looking at two sides of the same coin here. How do we ensure we get the best resources to our classrooms? And how do we ensure our classrooms are ready to use that technology effectively? So with that as our guiding desired outcome, we started to come together around an engagement plan, and this will probably look very familiar, as a year ago, we were engaging around our strategic plan work. So first is just seeking input from our parents and guardians in a variety of ways, using thought exchange to get input, utilizing SPS University to provide feedback and seek additional input, and then also looking at Let's Talk Live as additional ways for us to gather that input. We'll also be engaging our students, making sure that we're listening to their voice also through thought exchange, but also looking at, are there key groups that we can come together with? Our high school student councils and other individual student groups throughout the district that can help provide a voice for our students. Finally, we have our community, so we want to listen to our business leaders, our higher education leaders, and all of our stakeholders around what technology do our students need to understand, what technology skills do they need to gain while they're here at SPS. We'll do that in a variety of ways, again, through thought exchange, utilizing Good Morning Springfield, and then utilizing focus groups. So that's kind of our community outreach. As we look internally, we will be engaging teachers again in a variety of ways, through thought exchange, through Gather with Renita, through our Let's Talk Live, and through various staff meetings to ensure we're listening to what our teachers are telling us. We'll also be engaging with administrators, making sure that we have their voice at the table, especially at our job likes, those are great conversational places where we can really listen to what are they seeing in their buildings, what resources do they need, and what support does that look like. And then finally, our Educational Technology Committee, ensuring that we bring that committee together. We'll be looking at doing that in November as we begin the budgetary process for the school year. So finally, what is the timeline we're really looking at with the development of this plan? So again, starting with engagement is key, so we have the good input. We're looking at starting that next month. How do we start to put out thought exchanges? How do we engage with teachers and leaders throughout the organization and listen to our community? Then we'll bring together a work team to help with the development of this plan. There will be a variety of stakeholders, making sure that we're listening to everyone's voice here. We'll begin that work in November as we start to get that input, and we'll work through June 24 to ensure that that work is delivered. Finally, we'll be providing updates to the Board of Education. We're looking at that being February of '24 as we begin the budget planning work, and then finally delivering the final plan of June 24 so that we can then begin the implementation of said plan. And as we look at this, we want to ensure that we're aligned with the strategic plan throughout. So we want to make sure those three-year plans for each one of those departments matches what the strategic plan is and also has the flexibility to adjust as we know things can change over time. So with that, I'm happy to field any questions you have at this time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the Board for Chief Information Technology Officer Douglas? Yeah, you can start.
Okay. Simple question here. I was like, Education Technology Committee differ from the Technology Integration Committee?
It's just continuing that work. So forming a committee that stays year over year, meets probably quarterly throughout the year is kind of where the discussion has been, and make sure that every year we're looking at the best practices, looking at the work of the ISTE curriculum implementation, ensuring that it stays.
Right. A lot of acronyms I haven't, what is ISTE?
That's the international, I'm going to have to go look that one up, but it's the committee's recommendation of which technology standards we adopt as a district, so they have digital citizenship built into how we also utilize technology throughout the classroom.
Great. And on the stakeholder engagement, I think it's important, and you pointed out you're going to engage higher education. How are you going to engage them here?
Yeah, I think there's several different ways we'll be looking at it. So obviously, thought exchange and looking towards our leaders at higher ed to help distribute that information so we can get that feedback. I think that we'll also be connecting with those leaders to see what other ways we can get feedback from their organizations.
Okay. Right. Because we want to want their input to see if our students are coming prepared.
Exactly.
As Steve has brought that up before. Really good. We want them to be prepared coming out of high school. Okay. Let me see what else I have. I think that's it?
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a few comments. I like the emphasis on the input from the stakeholders. I think that's excellent. I would hope that, and I know it mentioned the principal job-like meetings, and that's a great place to collaborate, but I would also hope the principals, because each education community is different. Every school has its own climate, culture, needs, and I'm hoping that the principals will take a real active role to make sure that their constituents, their voices are heard, because the needs will be different in different locations. And then I love the idea of the student input. Don't limit it to student council. I mean, we need a cross-section of kids on that committee, and I think, again, that's where principals can take a lead and find, you know, different groups of students that will participate. I think that's very important, so thank you.
I want to emphasize everything that Board Member Brunner said. I couldn't agree with you more. And to just kind of add on to that, we want to hear from these voices, and we want to do it effectively. I think that the quality of anything that comes out of any committee, whatever comes out of any committee in any setting, really depends on how the committee, right, the makeup of that committee. And I like hearing all these, and I think it would be, it might be wise to just take another look and see if we can give a voice. Could we get somebody from higher ed to actually serve on that committee? It's one thing to ask for surveys and thought exchange, but to just drag them into the room and having them participate. I'm just putting it out there, you know? And I do like the idea of getting to the students and not just a select group of students. And I think that surveying students now versus seven years ago is going to look very different because this is, that we're going to be asking students where this is all they've ever known. So I think we should also be cautious with that. And coming on, I'm going to tag on to that, is, I don't want to put you on the spot now, but in the future, I think it would be nice to have some clarification of what is best practice. Not what are best practices, but who's defining best practices. And to remind ourselves that for our students, we get to decide, right, what is best practices. We can't use somebody else's playbook because we already know the Chromebook playbook is not working out. And so I think we have to be cautious when we use words like best practices. I'm almost done. And then lastly, and this is something I picked up at MSBA. I had an experience there that I want to relay. I don't want to get into the details, but I bring that up in that you mentioned that you're going to seek input. It's, again, fantastic, but it's how you get that feedback. Just like students who may not know better, we have teachers who may not know better because they went from not having technology to this technology, right? So if you ask them for feedback, they don't know what the options are. And I went to an MSBA meeting where they had used, and I'd have to go back to my notes to tell you what they're using. I remember being really excited and talking to you at the time about it, but the thing I asked was like, how did you guys arrive at this? Like, how did you, how did you end up with this product? And his answer really resonated with me. He said, well, they started ground zero. He said, well, they started ground zero. They brought one of every kind, and they put it in a room, and they invited teachers and principals and administrators to come and play, not play with them, but, you know, check them out and try them out, and only then did they know what, which direction to go in. Because I thought that was really intriguing. Like, how did you come up with, because whatever they came up with was pretty amazing. And so I think that when it's time to look at our options, maybe we have to go beyond just getting feedback, because your feedback is only gonna be on, you know, what's put in front of them. Like, I like this, but I don't like that. They don't know what else is out there. And so it may be helpful to just kind of go back to ground zero and broaden the field. Thank you for the presentation.
Just one quick question, Chief Douglas. That is one of the processes that you utilize when we're looking at equipment refresh, correct?
Yeah, yeah. We, whenever we're, especially with like our staff devices, we'll provide a couple different options. There's always a pro and con to each, and seek the feedback by making sure people get hands-on with it. So that will be something we want to continue to utilize.
Thank you. Board Member Byrne?
Will there be an opportunity in this process for board members to contribute, I guess, like broad, like topics that would be of interest to see in here? For example, cybersecurity, or for example, a plan to introduce keyboarding at certain grade levels, or think, whatever, whatever they are. But will there be an opportunity for us to contribute those individual thoughts and not necessarily to define it or get real specific, but just some general topics that we would each like to see possibly addressed in what becomes ultimately the finalized plan?
Just send me an email with your thoughts.
Can we maybe formalize that into, however we do those, I guess I'm asking, I would like to know each of the board members. It's not just what I want to put in there, but I would like the opportunity for each of us to say, hey, these are some of the things that wouldn't have been done.
Similar to the strategic plan, when you shared information, remember when we sent the information out for the strategic plan and you shared your input, it will be the same thing once we receive information from all board members. We will consolidate that and then share it with all board members. So I'm just saying, send it, and then we will collect, compile it, okay?
That's what I was trying to think of. Remember when we did the strategic plan, we had some...
We'll send it out, we'll send a survey out to you, and you can plug it in, and then we'll share that information.
So expect a survey? Something like that?
Yes. This process is similar to what we did last year through gathering information for the strategic plan.
Did you have any other questions or comments, Board Member Byrne?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yeah?
I agree with Board Member McConaughey when she said about, students don't know what they don't know, and sometimes teachers don't also. But I also want to be cautious that we also know that as a board, while we make a decision about what happens in our district, that we also don't know what we don't know. And so when we start with best practices, my thought is that those best practices come from someone who sat in a room with all of the technology and determined what works and what doesn't, and then from that, we move forward. So we take the information that we receive from you and the committee and whoever to help us make a decision, not based on what we prefer or what we think we know. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
I just have one brief question. What is a principal jobalike?
That is a monthly meeting where our principals come together as elementary, middle, and high school principals and like jobs. Yep, cover a variety of topics.
Any other questions or comments?
Perhaps if we made jobalike an acronym, we could get on board with more acronyms. How about that? Just saying.
I can't wait. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item 7.01, Local Model Compliance Plan for Special Education. Again, a reminder that the new business items brought forward this evening are for review and to ask any questions. We will then be voting at our September 26, 2023 regular meeting. At this time, Dr. Tanya Raibert, correct?
Yes.
Very good, is at the podium to present information on the Local Model Compliance Plan for Special Education.
Good evening. It is lovely to see you. Thank you for your time this evening. Each year, Missouri public schools must adopt a local special education compliance plan, and the local plan needs to be in alignment with the state plan. So anytime a change is made in the state plan for special education, it then triggers a change within our local compliance plan. So aside from some of the grammatical and punctuation corrections that were made, there are four changes in this compliance plan from the previous year. Those four changes are, the first one is clarifies that the LEA, meaning the school district, provides a special services plan to students with disabilities who have children that are parentally placed in a nonprofit elementary or secondary school. That was the change. This aligns with the federal language from the Office of Special Education. The second change is that for students that are enrolled full-time in mocap, that the host district, which for us is Springfield, we take on the responsibilities for free, appropriate public education for students with disabilities, which we are doing, but they obviously needed to include that language in the state plan and then now in our local plan. The third item is in regard to the procedural safeguard notice and that a copy of the parent bill of rights be included at the same time we provide that procedural safeguard. It's already something that we do, but there was just clarification to make sure that both of those documents are provided at the same time. And then the fourth change is actually under personnel standards, and it actually added some nationally recognized certification agencies for orientation and mobility specialists, accessible assistive technology teachers, and teachers of the visually impaired that meet requirements of the Bright Act. So those are the four changes that were made that would update our local compliance plan. Are there any questions? I'm hoping this is the easiest thing that you have this evening.
I just have a comment, which is, thank you for establishing what the differences are, because this is a very large document, and I was hoping to hear that, and it's exactly what you did.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I have the same comment that I make every year, is that I continue to have a problem with the use of the ability for the district to continue to use cognitive referencing, but I understand that from the state level, it's not something that you're responsible for, but I'd just like to state my disapproval of that, as we know it's not a best practice.
I understand.
Okay, all right.
All right. Thank you. Okay, this time we're moving on to item 7.02, which is the Health Insurance Plan Renewal, and Dr. Travis Shaw is here to present.
Hey, good evening. Each year in September, we bring to you the Health Insurance Plan Renewal. October is our open enrollment timeframe, and so this Health Insurance Plan Renewal encompasses a wide variety of items. So you have a four-page document that has been included with your packet to be able to outline all of the different items that go with this. I just want to highlight tonight a few things that were big items. As far as Health Insurance Plan Renewal time goes, this was a pretty uneventful year for renewal, which is really good. So let's first start with the medical plan. The recommendation is a renewal with Mercy. That's currently the provider that we use for our medical. We are anticipating an increase of 3% to our plan premiums. That will be the recommendation. One thing I do want to point out is it in this year's budget. We did budget for about a 5% increase to premiums, which is a little over $1 million. Based on the information we knew at that time, that's what was budgeted. As months continue to go through and as the plan continued to, I guess, surface with premiums versus our claims, our recommendation from our broker Lockton was that we didn't need to go that high. And so the 3% is actually gonna be about a $400,000 savings to what we have in our current budget, which is good news. The three current plan designs will remain unchanged. We have a high deductible plan, which is also the HSA, the Health Savings Account. We have a buy-up plan, and then we have our base plan. And so those current plan designs for this next year will remain unchanged. We do have some minor changes too, especially not preferred branding prescriptions specific to, one is in the buy-up plan and one is in the base plan, very minor, but those actually were savings to the district. Good news for the HSA, based on how the plans have come through, we are going to see a $912 annual contribution to HSAs for those employees who take those. That's actually a $204 increase over last year. So again, positive news for employees. And then the base plan will move to $565 a month per person, that the district does contribute to each of those plans. And so that is a cost that we continue as a district to pay 100%, which is a tremendous benefit that we have for our staff. For the dental plan, we, the renewal is with MatLife. If you may recall, last year, that did change and moved to MatLife, and that will stay the same. There are no increases to premiums. The basic and premium plan designs, again, remain unchanged. They have two options. The district does contribute, $10.85 per month for the employees. So if they choose a premium, they do pay a little bit more out of pocket, but that is the contribution the district has. And then pharmacy, this is probably where we see the largest change. The current plan is with Elixir. We did have a market check performed, which basically said, we went to Elixir and said, we need to have you give us our projections for the remainder of the year as well as next year. Based on that information, Lockton, who is our broker, suggested that we put out pharmacy to bid, because he felt like we could be in a much better place around our pharmacy benefits and the cost of the district. And from that bid, the district is recommending that we do make a change from Elixir over to Capital RX, and that will give us a projected annual savings of over $800,000, which is significant and obviously a lot of money that we couldn't simply walk away from to stay with Elixir. And so that will, these changes will all go into effect January 1st, and so as the open enrollment comes out in October, we will have a tremendous amount of communication that takes place from our HR, benefits staff, with employees around these changes, and make sure that everybody's on the same page when it comes to these renewals. So I believe that is really the highlight of the update on renewals. Again, a fairly non-eventful year, but if there's any questions that you have at this time, as far as these items or anything that was in the document, I'd be happy to try to answer those if I can. If not, I will phone a friend from HR who I've asked to be here.
Thank you, Dr. Shaw. Can we get this uploaded on Board Doc's presentation?
Yes.
Are there any questions from board members at this time?
It was a last-minute ad, I'm sorry.
No worries. Yes, Board Member.
Out of curiosity on the dental plan, is that a two-year lock in premiums?
It is, I believe, I have that here.
And Lockton did that for us, is that right?
They would have been a part of that bid process, and so, yeah, that's, these are prices guaranteed through December 31st of '24.
Is Vision included into that?
Vision is separate. Vision is, we don't provide any benefit, we don't pay for any benefit for Vision to staff, but Vision is completely separate. That one actually, that bid actually expires the end of this year, but we are anticipating any time for them to come back and say rates are the same. We don't anticipate any changes, but we haven't got that information currently. But we don't expect that to go up.
The reason I just happen to mention this is because I know that oftentimes you can put dental and vision together, not saying how to do your job, but you can actually marry those up. It's a possibility for negotiations.
Sure.
Reduce those premium on both of those.
Yeah, and that's certainly...
And have that a two-year plan, yeah.
We will certainly check on that.
Travis, with the change from Elixir to Capital RX, are there changes to opportunities for employees with regards to their prescriptions?
There are, there are. What we've seen up to this point right now is there's 210 different employees that will be affected one way or the other for what they call exclusions. And so I actually have the list right here as far as what those exclusions are, so there's not a lot. Majority of them are around things like diabetes. And so that's part of the communication that we will have specifically with each one of those employees, and Lockton, our broker, has given us all the different comments about how each of those drugs will be handled, whether it's, whether it's through a name brand, a preferred, a generic, a grandfathered in. So there are solutions to all of those that will minimally affect those employees, but yes, anytime you change pharmacy companies, that does happen. With 210 employees out of, I believe, there's, well, 36, 3700 employees plus spouses, we're well over 4,000 different lives, and so it's a very small percentage.
Thank you. Other questions at this time?
Yes, one. I see in the document that we received today that the third-party administrator for health, there's amendment there as well?
Yeah, so you're, so one of the complicated things with pharmacy was, Elixir was a pharmacy provider, we, there was, PaidHealth was involved in that, as well as MedPay was involved as a broker, and so it was really a little complicated. And so when that administrator for pharmacy took that on, they essentially reduced their fee as the third-party administrator for our overall medical, because they were making dollars off of the pharmacy side. And so we, that is something we anticipated, that we knew that if we went away from that model, and it is in our best interest to have all of pharmacy and medical under one broker, that that would affect what their third-party administrator fee was, and essentially, we're no longer going to pay that through the pharmacy that they would receive, but it's going to be overall. And so MedPay's been a great partner with us, and they continue to do a tremendous job on that third-party administration, but that's exactly what that represents.
Okay, great, thank you.
So MedPay now has both medical and pharmacy?
They currently do. Well, they're the, they're the third-party administrator for our, our medical. They are involved through with PaidHealth on the broker side with pharmacy, and that's no longer going to be in that sense. And I know that was something that previous administrations said, that's really kind of quirky, we need to figure out a better way to streamline that, and this certainly does that. But they will continue to do all of the third-party administration for our medical under this particular plan.
Can I just walk through the pharmacy?
Correct.
So what happens to the pharmacy?
It'll be handled through Lockton. Lockton will be, Lockton will be the broker, okay? MedPay will continue to do the third-party administration. They just won't be receiving funds off of the pharmacy piece of it.
Okay. So who's the third-party administrator for the pharmacy now?
Third-party administrator, am I saying this correctly, Melanie, is still going to be MedPay, correct? Yes, they're the third-party administrator, they're not going to be the broker on the pharmacy side. I wasn't explaining that well.
God, okay, that makes more sense.
Yeah, that makes sense now.
Thank you.
Not living this world for a very long time. Learning as I go.
It's complicated.
So, and I'm not making any less complicated.
Okay, thank you. And this item will be brought forward for a vote at our September 26 meeting. Thank you. Moving on to item 8.01, Change Orders and Agreements. Mr. Carpenter is here to present information to us. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. I'm here to present to you the 2023 Bond Projects Updates and Action Items along with Change Orders and Agreements. My recommended action item would be for the Board to approve the Change Orders and Agreements as presented. I would like to highlight just a few things here. As you noticed, there's six FFNE and IT for networking. We, as a group, got together, and we want to make sure that we take any barriers away that might hold up construction, so that's why you see all six items listed there, because we do know that there is a delay sometimes with some of the construction items, and therefore, that's why we have that with switches and some of the racks. Also, I would take note as well, there at the bottom, as you see the nine administrative in notorious buildings, Phase Four and Phase Five for the safety and security film. This will complete that safety and security audit that we're currently doing with the safety and security. This will complete that safety and security audit that we're currently doing with the safety and security. Any questions?
Thank you. And we've been previously provided this information, but are there any questions from board members?
Just out of curiosity, how many auditoriums do we have?
We have two. And I'm learning quick.
Other questions from board members? Okay, the recommended action is that the Board approve the change orders and agreements as presented. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that the Board approve the change orders as presented.
Thank you. Board Member McCosky made the motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second from Board Member Thomas Tate. Any further discussion?
I didn't understand. So it was a cost saving that you're doing all the ITs at the same time? I just, I mean, can you just repeat that? It went right over my head.
Sure, I think it might have went pretty quick. With some of our IT networking, we've seen some delays, and therefore we want to get ahead of the game.
Oh, so you're pre-ordering?
Exactly.
Okay, got it. Okay, I understand that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Okay, the motion that the Board approved the change orders and agreements as presented passes 7-0. Thank you. Moving on to item 9.01, Superintendent's Update. Dr. Leighton?
Yes. Good evening. We recently completed our thought exchange about the first few weeks of school year. We've asked participants to tell us what worked well and what could be improved. We're currently reviewing that feedback and will be sharing a summary with participants soon. We had over 1,600 people to participate, and they shared over 1,000 thoughts and over 48,000 ratings. I'm pleased to report that five Missouri State University students have signed letters of intent to become SPS teachers following graduation through our Future Educators Program. We are recruiting and cultivating talented professionals to join Team SPS. This is our second cohort of future educators. And finally, Board Members, on your calendar, we are ready to open the newly renovated Academy of Exploration. That ribbon-cutting event will be held on Thursday, September 21st at 5:00 p.m. Remember, we're repurposing the former annex at Hillcrest High School. And so we're excited to host that ribbon-cutting on Thursday, September 21st. That concludes my updates.
Thank you, Dr. Leighton. Moving on to item 10.01, Board Comments. Do we have any comments from the Board?
I would like to make the Board aware of the Public Affairs Conference at Missouri State University that's coming up on September 26th through 28th. The theme, which I can't find, is Navigating the Now. It's looking at some of the changes in education from previous times to what's going on now. There's some really good panels on artificial intelligence and technology that will be interesting. I'm on the committee for this particular conference, and so I encourage you to take part of our free virtual sessions. That will be, it's listed online if you're interested. They're free, open to the public, and they are virtual. And there's some really good speakers coming in to talk about a number of, of some of the changes that are happening in public education at the higher ed and at the K-12 level.
Thank you.
Repeat, where is that?
It's online.
It's online, okay.
It's virtual, and it's September 26th through 28th. And if you go to Missouri State Public Affairs Conference, you can get the whole schedule.
Okay, thank you.
It's completely virtual?
There are several in-person speakers, plenary speakers, but all of the sessions are virtual, except for the plenary speakers.
Are those three too?
They are, except for one. I think it's Jill Montana.
Any further comments from board members?
Okay, just a couple of comments that I had. Just an exciting day with Cox Health, Missouri State University, and OTC on the healthcare, Alliance for Healthcare Education. Thank you to the board members who were able to attend. I know that we've got a lot of support in our community for our students, and we just really appreciate that. Also, a reminder tomorrow is the MSBA Regional Meeting in Ozark. I don't know, are we all?
I'm not going to be there.
Okay, okay.
I have to go to hotel.
Okay, okay. Some of us will be there tomorrow. I know it's a good opportunity to meet other board members in our community outside of SPS and a good opportunity for continuing education as well, so. Any other comments? All right, and then our next board meeting is September 26, 2023, which will be a regular board meeting. And our final action this evening is that our recommended action is the Board adjourn. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Member Thomas Tate, second from Member McCosky. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote.
Oh, yeah, they could just, yeah.
Any objection? Motion to adjourn passes 7-0.